I'm guessing you're all here for the county coroner discussion? Most on the phone also of county coroner discussion? Okay, good to know. All right. Mr. Steen, are we ready? All right, team members, we are at 3:30. I see some adjustments being made at Commissioner Pollak's abode. Here we go, all right, thanks, Mitch. With that, I will call the July 6th County Board of Commissioners to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pollak?
Here.
Peterson?
I'm here.
Dean?
Here.
Scherling?
Here.
Brightling?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you, everyone. With that, if you would please rise even at your home for the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Ward, if you can lead us, please. Within the county commission's budget, what we're going to do is allocate some dollars towards little miniature flags we can send out to people attending the meeting so you can feel comfortable at your house looking at a little American flag. That's a joke. Okay, with that, commissioners, I presume we had a chance to review prior meeting minutes. If so, look for motion to approve or amend accordingly, please.
No motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Well, same sign. Motion passes. Next item, the order of agenda. We do have one addition. It's actually in your packet. Commissioners at home, you would have received an email. Fire, apologize for that. I would recommend it actually be moved up to like 1C because again, I don't think our audience needs to sit through all the other things we have going. And actually, that will be a long meeting, so to be fair to our audience, I'd recommend that item Career Workforce Academy Funding Update be moved to item 1C. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Steen, I move to approve the order of the agenda with the addition of the Career Workforce Academy Funding Update to the regular agenda at 1C. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All supposed same side? Motion passes. Thank you. With that, we have the consent agenda. We have a chance. I assume we've had a chance to review that. If so, look for motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollak moves the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, all call vote, please.
Commissioner Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Scherling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. At this time, we have a chance for public comment. If anyone wants to speak something regarding an item not on the agenda, this is the time to do it. Give you a couple of minutes to address the commission. Don't see anyone scrambling to their virtual mic or literal mic. So with that, we'll proceed on to the regular agenda. Item 1A, Elliott Place and Elliott Place 4, Elliott Place 9, Pilot Projects. Mr. Gilmore, I see you on the line. Presume you can unmute yourself. If so, give us an update as to what's going on, please.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. This is a proposed 84-unit affordable housing project that would be for seniors located at 4462 30th Avenue South in Fargo, just on the east side of 45th Street. What you have before you is actually two requests for property tax exemptions because while this is one project, there will be two different ownership groups because there's two different sets of tax credits that will be sold to two different groups of investors, or at least set up as two different organizations. So while it'll look at, well, it'll look as one building, it'll actually be two different ownership groups. The lead investor on this is the Fargo Housing Authority. Their partner on this is Blue Line Development. They'll be involved with some of the development as well as selling the tax credits. The request is for a property tax exemption for a 17-year period where they would just pay the tax on the land and not on the building. The tax on the land is expected to be $14,000 a year. The reason for this tax exemption is there's actually quite a complex funding package for the overall project. It includes 9% housing, low-income housing tax credits. You've seen many of those projects in the past. Those typically, the developer can pay a little bit more in property taxes. However, 52 of the units will have these 4% credits. Those are not nearly as valuable and did not bring as much money towards the construction. Because of those less valuable tax credits, they have secured additional grants from both the Housing Trust Fund and Housing Incentive Fund to the North Dakota Housing Finance Agency. The city of Fargo has contributed CDVG money and Home Block grant money to this. The need for low-income housing is quite high in our community. There's a lot of people on the waiting list. And plus, the Fargo Hou- I mean, the Fargo High Rise, a building located in downtown with 247 units, over the next two years, that's going to be vacated and we're losing that resource in the community, although it's being replaced with some housing vouchers. How this project would work is right now, the land is vacant and because it is vacant and owned by the Fargo Housing Authority, it pays no property taxes. And so there's no property taxes that go to any of the taxing jurisdictions. During the 17-year period of this property tax exemption, because there's a for-profit partner in here that's selling, helping sell the tax credits, it will pay property taxes on the land. And so the property taxes will be $14,000 per year based on current valuation and current mill levy rates. After the 17-year period, the property will, the private partner will be, will no longer be part of the project. The property will then transfer to the Fargo Housing Authority and like other properties owned by the Fargo Housing Authority, they would not be subject to general property taxes of all the taxing jurisdictions. We had a, anytime we have these low-income housing property tax credits, we still do a, an analysis by our financial consultants to take a look at whether or not this is needed given all the other grants or whether or not they could afford to pay more property taxes. That analysis is included in your packet. If they had to pay the full property taxes from the start, this project would not be feasible. They need to obtain about a $4 million loan in addition to all these other tax credits and incentives. If the county were to opt out, it still isn't feasible. They can't afford to pay that 17%, 18%. And the only way it is able to cash flow in the early years is to get that full property tax exemption and only paying the land. The Fargo City Commissioner has already reviewed this. They're fully in support of the project. They voted 5-0 in favor of the tax exemption, realizing it's the, it's a very important project. And Commissioner Garrick said I should also point out to you that even he voted for this property tax exemption and urges that you do the same. Matt Pike, I don't know if you're on the line.
Mr. Pike is here.
Matt, maybe you can talk about the overall need for low-income housing in the community and then Matt would be available to ask any technical questions on the financing and the project. So I'll mute myself if it's the online in case you have any other questions, unless you have a question right now.
Mr. Pike, if you would, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Thanks for this opportunity. Well, thank you, Jim. Of course, I always want to thank him first because he does a tremendous job framing these conversations for me and I hope for all of you. So we started out, my predecessor started out three years, more than three years ago, probably about four years ago, identifying a piece of property that was potentially to be used for future affordable development. When I joined two years ago as Executive Director at the Housing Authority, I wanted to partner very closely with the community and city leaders in particular to try and identify what was the best use for this vacant piece of property that we had to develop. And the best use for it was to tie it into the growing need for affordable senior development with a goal towards allowing those elderly folks who have lived here their whole lives and want to stay in Fargo but might not be able to afford to stay in Fargo without a project like this, or alternatively, be able to address a growing need of a growing population of elderly folks who want to come to Fargo but might not be able to come to Fargo without an opportunity like this. So with that, we put together a low-income housing tax credit application. We tied that both in 4% and 9%. We also tied it to Housing Trust Fund and Housing Incentive Fund application. And we got incredibly fortunate and have this opportunity to build these 84 units. Where Fargo Housing is willing, is coming to the table to an even greater degree is we're taking 84 of our vouchers that we have available and committing them to this building so that all of the units within this building will serve those who are reach at or below an area of median income of 50% or less to make sure we're serving those folks who are seriously in need of affordable housing opportunities. And they are all seniors. All 84 units are committed to seniors. So if we've got questions, I'm happy to address them. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I just want to express my gratitude again to Jim, to the City Commission, and to all of you in the County Commission for considering this request.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions?
I have a question. This is Commissioner Pollak speaking. So what's the design life of the structure that is being contemplated?
The design life of the structure is 30 to 50 years. We are, we aim to keep this property long past its tax credit useful life and then be able to even redevelop it or rehabilitate it well past the tax credit period potentially for long-term use. So this is not some sort of throwaway building. This is something that we're seriously committed to for decades to come.
So the reason why I ask that is the downtown high-rise that's being vacated, you know, there's no reason why a building that costs that much money and has served its purpose for so long should have to be, should really be functionally obsolete after it's been used for 50 years. And I'm just asking if this building is going to be in the same position as that.
The answer is no, Commissioner Pollak. And thanks for noting the high-rise because as Jim noted, the need for this building is somewhat driven by the high-rise, but I think it's even more so just driven by a growing population of aging baby boomers and making sure that folks who, as I said, lived here their whole lives can afford to stay here in Fargo. But to address the high-rise, the critical need in the high-rise, Commissioner Pollak, is oriented around really one factor, and it's the cost of the wastewater, rehabilitating the wastewater and freshwater cast iron piping within a very, as you note, a very well-built structure that our federal tax dollars paid for in the late 1960s and very early 1970s. So it's, we don't know what the future of that building is going to be. It may be rehabilitated, but it may be demolished. We don't know. But the serious cost associated with that is based on just the materials that were put into the infrastructure of that building in the form of cast iron wastewater and freshwater pipes. Getting into the walls in an otherwise really well-built structure is incredibly costly. This building is of course being designed with the most modern techniques so that we can hopefully see it go 60, 70 years into the future.
Matt, maybe you want to address the asbestos and the hazardous, or the materials that are in the high-rise because I think the issue of the high-rise is it was going to cost, it's going to be cheaper to build new than it was to rehab that building for public housing. Otherwise, I think it might have gone that direction. The other thing is it, putting 247 low-income people in one building, elderly and non-elderly, it's just been difficult for the Housing Authority to manage.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. And I'll just, I'll just spend to follow up on that is Jim's got it exactly right. When I talked about getting into the walls to deal with those cast iron pipes, it means also remediating asbestos at every point once we pass into those walls because that fire retardant substance that we now know to be hazardous was used throughout the building at its construction period. And now just that remediation, it doesn't matter if we rehabilitate the building, but the remediation of the asbestos is mandatory no matter what the future use of that building is and the cost is prohibitive. And the second thing, as Jim just mentioned, is the model for housing folks who are of lesser means and to meet their affordability requirements, the model that was adopted in the late 1960s and early 70s of that kind of density is not a model that we find is successful anymore. So even if the high-rise were rehabilitated, it would be a reduction in the overall number of units to bring down that density to increase the dignity and opportunity for those folks who would be residing there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, further questions? Commissioner Steen?
I have no questions, but I'd like to make a motion. Could you delay the motion for a second, sir?
I can delay the motion.
Couple of points of clarification, either Mr. Pike or Mr. Gilmore. We have a couple of spreadsheets. One shows a great deal of developer profits in excess of $2 million. The other shows a loss. You give me a brief clarification as to why we have such divergence?
Jim, I can, I can't, Commissioner, I can't account for what the loss is. So there is deferred developer fees of about $24,000 per year throughout the tax credit compliance year, period. There is a developer fee and because these are low-income projects, unlike for-profit projects and that are set at market rate, this affordable housing is not done based on the amount of money you'll make over the useful life of the building. If there's any amount to be made, it's made in that developer fee. And that for the Housing Authority is, one, how we pay for staff and, two, it's the only incentive we have to do these development projects. Nobody on our staff is making money outside of it in the form of bonuses or anything else. We're splitting that developer fee with Blue Line Development Group. And that's because when Beyond Shelter, Inc., split with Fargo Housing back five years ago, Fargo Housing has been in a period of developing the capacity to do these projects on our own. This is a project that we're doing in partnership with an outside mission-driven development organization, but the future is what that developer fee is, and we're splitting that for Fargo Housing, is to reinvest it right back in Fargo Housing so that we can do future projects.
So the developer fee showing the $2.4 million is accurate?
It's 2.3 and change or 2.4. I don't have the number in front of me. That is, that's an accurate number because again, the housing authorities and affordable property developers aren't making any money in rent. And then we're deferring a portion of that that we can only expect to get paid back if we meet certain conditions. But we're otherwise splitting that developer fee and for Fargo Housing, we're reinvesting that right back into future affordable housing opportunities here in the city.
So the question I have for you then is if someone's a developer, how would they team up with you? What's the best way for someone type of citizen to team up with your organization so they can make some money too?
So there's.
I expect Blue Line Development as opposed to someone else.
Yes, and in Blue Line Development, so they don't, they, for Blue Line Development, they partner with us through an RFP and were selected from that RFP process to provide to us the technical expertise so that we could get this property built. And the reason for that is because when we, when my predecessor purchased this vacant lot, there was a commitment that came along with the CDVG funds from the city that contributed to, and then there was a commercial loan to, for the balance of the property, but there was a commitment to make sure that we delivered affordable units. And in order to meet that commitment, Fargo Housing didn't have the technical expertise to do the development entirely in-house. So that's part number one. Part number two is for somebody else who wants to come to Fargo, to come to Fargo Housing and hopefully partner with us, two-part answer there, but quick. One is of course, if we have vouchers that we can project base into their development or we can put in, if they bring the land, for example, and we can put together an application for a low-income housing tax credit project together in partnership and find a way to make that all work, that would be the optimal future situation. And finally, it's because in the future, I don't want to have to partner with somebody like Blue Line Development. I want Fargo Housing for this community and for this county to be able to be the go-to place when folks want to do development, know that we've got the internal, in-house expertise. One way we get there is by doing a successful project like this with a partner. The next one ideally, or the one after that, we don't have a partner and we're able to partner closely with the city and the rest of the community to get these things done.
Okay, and the last question is, is this going to be publicly bid or are they going to do design-build?
So we've already gone through an RFP process and we've got a local architect, we've got a local general contractor, and all of those are already moving forward. And we're going, they all have separate RFP processes that have been all publicly bid so far.
Perfect. Good answer. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Steen, you have a thought?
Yes, I was going to move to participate in the request for a payment and move taxes pilot incentive for two low-income housing projects in partnership with the Fargo Housing and redevelopment authority submitted by Elliott Place 4 and Elliott Place 9 for a 17-year period.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Scherling?
Yes.
Brightling? Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Obviously, feel free to stay, oh, Mr. Gilmore, please stay on the line. Mr. Pike, you feel free to stay on the line, too. We have fun meetings. I always tell you, clowns and elephants. You disconnect right now, you might not see them. So with that, item 1B, the PRX Performance Pilot Project. Mr. Gilmore, lead us off, please.
This is a local company that's seen some very fast growth and so fast that I think what they like to do is actually build a slightly bigger building and, but today, we'd still like to take a little bit of time to talk about the company and let them tell you about it. They make at-home exercise equipment. They've seen some rapid growth. And so let me, I believe the gentlemen are on the line. They can tell you best about the company. This particular application was 100, for 140,000 square foot building. They're looking at building even larger and creating more jobs, and so I'll let them address that.
Outstanding. Gentlemen?
All right, thanks, Jim. Thanks, Commissioners, for your time. I'm Brian Barash, CEO of PRX Performance. And we have a presentation ready. However, we had a board meeting at the end of the week last week and we decided to expand not only the size of the building from 140,000 beyond, we're also going to add significant amount of capital equipment. We're also, we found another business that is closing their doors in Fargo in the coming months. And while our new building won't be open for a year, we're meeting with their executive team this week potentially to hire the entire staff, bring them on early and so we can have knowledgeable experts in the manufacturing space when, so we can hit the ground running next year when we open. So at this time, we were on the agenda, but we would like to ask for two more weeks to come back with final numbers, what it's going to look like with this new manufacturing facility added to our pre-planned office and warehouse space. With that, we could either pass today and just come back in two weeks or answer any questions now.
I would suggest that we table this or not address it today, Commissioners. Not that we're wasting your time, but if you've got something significantly different than what we're seeing, I think everyone's best interest for you to wait.
That'd be great.
Okay, is that, Mr. Gilmore, is that a question?
Yeah, Commissioners, I think what we'll do is have them resubmit a new application and we'll send a new letter to the county for the larger project. So on this particular one, if you want to take the action to just continue to negotiate, if you're concerned about that, you know, 30-day review period, you're certainly free to do that. And then we would get you a new application as well as get the new application back to our tax exempt review committee.
Mr. Wilson, do we have to address it regarding the 30 days?
Please, as it is removed. Mr. Chair, this is, this is Robert, just regarding your question right there. If you continue to negotiate, as Mr. Gilmore indicated, I think that would, that would cover you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, we have a thought regarding that? Commissioner Steen?
I will move to not participate at this time in the request for a payment in lieu of taxes pilot incentive for the new headquarters industrial manufacturing. So it's submitted by PRX Performance for a 10-year period and to negotiate the terms of the property tax incentive that's described in NDCC Chapter 400524.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Beautiful. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, roll, turn to roll call, please.
Commissioner Pollak?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Scherling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Gentlemen, we'll see you in two weeks. Mr. Wilson? Please look for a letter. Thank you. Item 1C on our agenda, which is the Career Workforce Academy Funding Update. Commissioners, I'll actually, I'll start off on this one, I think. So what you, I apologize for the brevity, the timeliness of this or lack of timeliness of this. What we have before us is the Career Workforce Academy capital budget. It's a sheet, I presume. You haven't got a hard copy here in person? You have a hard copy in person? Commissioner Brightling, you have a hard copy, yeah? Don't? Hard copy?
Yep.
I'll find a soft copy.
The copy is in the.
Okay. Commissioners, I presume, Commissioner Pollak, Commissioner Scherling, you have a copy emailed to you. What this is, is essentially the revised budget for the project. And Commissioner Pollak, you can jump in after me, still printer, is substantially down reduced, the budget's $5 million. This then acknowledges how we're going to get things paid for. And I think it's important for us to acknowledge that our friends in Fargo, our friends in West Fargo, we also have a number of other people from the outside communities, the Fueling Our Future Group. And long story short, we've gone from a $30 million project to a $25.22 million project. And I think as before, I've always supported it. My struggle has always been $15 million. The debate whether we should be involved in education, the debate whether we should be involved in probably to some degree, maybe a state function, certainly a local function at the very least in terms of education, I think is, there's some merit to that. But to me, the reality is, I think we have to participate to some degree. What I said, and I'll be blunt about this, I said the $5 million number makes me incredibly uncomfortable, but I think everyone involved, be it, I talked to Mayor Dardis, I talked to Mayor Mahoney, we've talked, I think enough of us are uncomfortable where it's comfortable. So everybody seems happy. And to me, $5 million number is there. I know how I want to pay for it and maybe I'll just jump into that right now. Then Commissioners, I'll let you just unleash on me after I'm done. I think that we've got the, Mr. Montleish, you're correct me if I'm wrong, we've got roughly $864,000 in the bank right now as a shortfall of roughly 150. Here's my goal. We'd have the one mill remain for four more years. That's how we get the $5 million funded because the mills for next year will be close to $1 million. And I think we can find, whether it's through reallocation of existing dollars or allocation of general fund dollars, I think we can make up the slight shortfall of the 50-ish thousand plus or minus per year for the next four years as well as the $150,000. Where I'm hoping to get that $150,000 is. Where I'm hoping to get that hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, by the end of the month, we're going to know whether or not our friends in the state, uh, with the Inferno City Commission are going to fund our addition, our COVID project. If you recall, we have in our budget right now, two hundred thousand dollars to start the preliminary design for the COVID project, that hundred, two hundred thousand dollars could very easily be split to cover the one hundred and fifty, should the state participate with what we think, what I think anyway, is a needful project at our jail, that makes us square there, plus it gives us fifty thousand dollars extra to cover the void this year, so the remaining three years of the fifty thousand dollar void need to be made up some other way, or whether it's myself and Commissioner Scherling get re-elected, certainly the three of you, I guess Commissioner Pollak as well, too, uh, whoever's sitting in these three seats will have a ti- a, a chance to address that fifty thousand dollar shortfall to years three, four, and five. So that's how I oppose the five million dollars. I think it's a needful project. I'm going to support the five million dollars. Like I said, I'm not really comfortable with it, but in the same breath, I know it's a needful thing, and we have to allocate this five million dollars to get the federal, if you look at the second, second block downwards, the federal grant, five million dollars that needs and requires local matching funds. So that's how we get there. Team, team, team. I would also put a caveat on this, that if we somehow breach the private donations, that if it's us, Fargo, West Fargo, both dollars would be proportionally refunded to taxpayers. So if we buy that million dollars, she rounds, uh, I'll not do the math on it right now, but those numbers would be proportionally refunded, quote-unquote, or not needed in terms of the budget in, in coming years, and be proportional relative to CAFs, Fargo and West Fargo's portions as they're allocated right now. I'm going to stop. So I support it, I think it's a good idea. Commissioners, what is your thoughts?
This is Commissioner Pollak speaking.
Yes, sir.
And, um, and I think that I, that we can continue with the, with the one-mill levy until we would meet the obligation that we have. The whole idea here is, is we're lever- leveraging a lot of other, other money in order to make this happen. Uh, we may not get the grant, or some of our partners may choose not to participate, and, and, and that means that, you know, there might end up having to be some sort of, uh, alteration in the, in the funding formula, but this is what we have in front of us, and I think that this helps to move it forward. Uh, a- anything more than this, and, and I just have to say, it has to go in front of the voters before, but this is doable at this, the way that it's laid out.
Commissioner Scherling? Do you have a thought, Commissioner Scherling? I guess not. Uh, Commissioner Steen, something?
Uh, as you're, as the Commissioners are aware, I've been fully supportive of the project, and, um, I think the resolution of how this is funded and, and costs we're looking at is, is quite appropriate. I think the five million dollar federal grant is paramount in how we get this done, and I'm fully supportive of going forward with the plan you put forth, Mr. Chairman. I think we can afford it. Uh, Commissioners, any further thoughts? And I think this is something we have to take a informal action on right now, and obviously with budget hearings coming up in a couple of weeks, uh, that's where we really address this, but what we need for that federal grant is essentially, uh, lack of a better term, a promise screen out in I O U, uh, so that the federal government understands there's local investment. Our friends in Fargo, Fargo, proceeding in the same fashion, the dates, uh, on the sheet, and, uh, I, I've encouraged our, our committee going after this federal grant to try to go for more than five million dollars. We talked about ten, the in, the indication, inclination from them was, ten is not doable, even with our support from both, uh, we have Senator Hovind and Senator Kramer on, on letterhead, I do believe, and I know Hovind's on letterhead. Senator Kramer, as of a couple of weeks ago, said he would do anything he could to help facilitate this grant. Uh, we know they've got a hundred and thirty-plus or minus million dollars more than they have otherwise, so I'd love to see us go for more than five. I think ten's upgradable, but a six or a seven would make me just tingle all over with joy, so that's my thoughts.
Commissioners, any more?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Pollak speaking.
Yes, sir.
I thi- I think we have to take some sort of action. Would it be a resolution of support, or?
Yes, sir. Yep, we just, go ahead, sir, sorry.
So I, I would, I would move that the Cass County Commission offer a resolution of support for funding this at the five million dollar total level.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Scherling?
Yeah.
Brightling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you to everyone in the audience. Again, I presume you're for the corridor, so not for this, uh, but those of you online, also thank you for your support. I think that, uh, like I said, it's a little bit of uncomfortable level for all of us, and that probably means it's about the right number. So again, thank you for everyone, and thank you for everyone participating and paying attention to local government, because I think I'm biased, we matter. Next item on our agenda, item, uh, first agreement for the Phillips home buyout. Mr. Benson? No, wait, no, you can't leave, it's the coroner, the coroner, everyone's trying to leave the meeting. Go, go on, it's safe.
We're kidding, you don't need to stay.
You can watch online as you're driving home.
That's bad.
Coroners are important people, too, to keep us, well, not us safe, to make sure that, I see. All right, that's fine. Mr. Benson, your audience, no, it's just a handful of us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'll, I'll quick do a, uh, screen share for those that can see, uh, um, the, the Phillips property, um, just a, a quick introduction to this location. This was brought to the Halfcent Sales Tax Committee meeting, uh, back in early June to be approved.
You can see a screen, correct? Commissioner Scherling, Pollak?
Yeah, very well.
Mr. Benson, just wanted to make sure. Thank you, sir. Please go.
Okay. Yes, thank you. So it was brought to the Halfcent Sales Tax Committee meeting, uh, for approval pending, uh, this property had been on a FEMA, uh, buyout list. Unfortunately, that, uh, FEMA hazard mitigation, or, uh, pre-disaster mitigation application was denied, and, um, so the, the Sales Tax Committee approved it pending, um, the results of, of that application. Since it was denied, we're now moving forward with the acquisition. Just a, a quick background, this is, this property is located at the confluence of the Cheyenne and Red River, and in the, the, the kind of non-shaded area where you see two small buildings, those are two little sheds, the actual house is just a little bit to the, uh, up and left from those buildings, and it falls within the Hundred Year Flood Plain, and it's also been mapped into the, the floodway itself, so there's no way to, to build on this lot, and, um, and even, uh, when you look at the close proximity of it to the minimal disturbance zone, and, uh, on the right-hand side is what it'll, that area will look like post-diversion, so it'll continue to have significant flood issues after the diversion. So it's got flood issues, but more, more importantly, it has significant, uh, soil stability problems. This is the, the basement, the, the whole house is really starting to slide and shift into the Cheyenne River. Um, on the left-hand side was the fall of twenty nineteen, and you can see spring as the floodwaters receded, the riverbank slumped even deeper. It's now about a ten-foot drop, um, right outside their, their door. Uh, so, uh, with this.
Oh, Mr. Benson, that looks solid.
Yeah, if, if, if you want a lockout basement, um, got to cut a hole in there.
You're welcome.
Um, so with, with that, uh, we, back at the, the Sales Tax Committee meeting, we had estimated that the, the cost of this acquisition would be right around three hundred thousand. Um, however, as we've looked at this deeper, uh, preference in talking with Mr. Phillips, as well as our preference in maintaining this, uh, larger parcel, I'll go back to one of these, uh, screenshots, but you can see, there, there is a larger part of this that is, is all ag, and normally when we do a, a, a purchase, we purchase the home and the, the lot that it sits on, and in this case, we'd rather keep, uh, keep this ag land usable, um, in someone else's hands and, and being farmed versus us taking it over and, and having a large area to have to mow. So, um, so instead of the, the larger acquisition of the land, uh, we're, we're suggesting acquiring just the structure itself, demoing the structure, and then putting a deed restriction on the, the remaining land so that it can, can still be farmed, can stay in the tax rolls, and is one area that we don't have to go back and mow and maintain. Um, but at the same time, we're acquiring, you know, really, the, the, the core issue, the structure itself. Uh, so with that, uh, there is skin in the game with Mr. Phillips in that, um, uh, he is going to pay ten percent, um, pick up ten percent of the overall acquisition cost of the house and the demo cost, uh, so that our overall cost for the ac- for acquisition and demo and everything will, we estimate at around two hundred and seventeen thousand, but, um, uh, what Mr., what Mr. Phillips will be receiving will be roughly a hundred and forty-nine thousand, so, um, in my memo, you can see roughly one forty-five to one fifty-five, depending on the outcome of, uh, asbestos, our asbestos removal, um, survey. If we have to spend more money on asbestos removal, then our, our cost would go up a little, um, uh, in, you know, up some additional amount. Um, so with that, I'll take any questions.
Mr. Benson, you touched on the subject I was going to get to. You have an estimate of about one thousand of ser- so there's been no survey for STOS or for lead paint yet?
Correct. We, we are still, uh, we're in the process of, of, uh, working to get someone out there to do that, and, and that's why we, we have twenty thousand in as an estimate for removal. Sometimes it can be substantially less if it's just one or two small items, sometimes it could be more.
So I was trying to look through, when was this house built? I couldn't find it on here. I'm sure you've got it here, I just can't find it anywhere.
Um, I, I believe it's in Tom's house.
It's the early nineteen hundreds for the main structure, and then it was added on in the, the seventies, the north part, so.
Do they have some piping, like, it'd be steam piping in the basement? Is that why you're thinking there's asbestos or something, or is it just being defensive?
Just, uh, because of past issues that we've had where you, between piping and then, depending on some additions, um, some of the floor tiles, shingles, there, there are some different items that, that could possibly be, um.
Maybe the size, too, but.
And, and again, with this, with the asbestos, it, it's always interesting, and, and it's also lead paint, um, that, that, that we get surveyed as well, so. And you can see in this photo, the, the portion to the right is the older farmhouse, and the portion to the left that juts out is the newer addition from the seventies.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Steen has a quick question, so I'm looking at the pictures you shared with us, Jason, and I, I scratched my head, and I wonder, how can the assessed value be a hundred and fifty-six thousand? Just a thought, but.
Based off of tax.
Um, Commissioner Steen, I, um, I can understand, if, and we're just going off of the assessed, uh, tax values right off our G I S, and, and, and I know, uh, you know, I don't know how often they go out and evaluate, you know, based on these changing soil conditions, um, but, uh, yeah, obviously, I would think the, things, things change as, as the, the soil and, and especially looking at the basement.
Just, that was just a comment. Commissioner Brightling, Commissioner Steen, or assessment people, we go to the, see the next one, I, you know, maybe it's, could be based upon updated conditions. Then there was another one else that we've looked at. And that was much more expensive property, I think. Commissioner Brightling?
The, uh, attachment to the hamdow, there's, there's a reference that three outbuildings would remain. Is that correct?
Uh, correct. The, um, there's, there's three small sheds, and, um, so it'd be the deed restrictions that they could never be, uh, you couldn't build anything else, uh, he would like to have the ability to leave a mower and some other small equipment out there, but no, no other future buildings would be removed or, uh, built, and, and we wouldn't, uh, we've, we've never participated in the acquisition of, uh, or generally in, in sole acquisitions of only, uh, outbuildings. We've only focused on residential structures and then attach, generally attached buildings, and we, we've, in the past, done smaller acquisitions, um, of, of an adjacent outbuilding when we've done the larger, larger acquisition, but, uh, in this case, with the adjacent ag land, it seemed reasonable to, to leave the small outbuildings, but again, deed restricted from any future construction.
How many acres would we actually be purchasing and put with, with the deed restriction?
Uh, Commissioner Brightling, the, the deed restriction, um, the deed restriction is on two lots, and, um, I'm, a quick, uh, unfortunately, I didn't have, I don't have that number right in front of me, but I'll, uh, Tom, I don't know if you.
It's around forty acres.
And the larger portion is, uh, thirty-nine acres, and then the smaller, uh, the small pu- smaller parcel that's just under two acres. So roughly forty acres total, of which, uh, about three-fourths of it is, is agricultural land.
So, if we're acquiring it, are we going to then rent it back to this quarter?
Commissioner Brightling, we'll, we'll, we're only acquiring the structure, and we're going to demo the structure, and we won't acquire the land, so the land will stay in Mr. Phillips' name with the deed restrictions so that no future buildings can be constructed.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollak, I author, I moved to authorize the county engineer to proceed with the Phillips home buyout, subject to the state's attorney approval.
Is there a second, please? Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I think that this is, this is the best possible deal that the county could, could hope to get. We don't, we don't have to maintain the property, we're just buying the, spending the minimal amount, and it keeps the remainder of the property on the tax rolls and, and in private hands, and this, this is a good outcome for this.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Erling?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Mr. Benson, anything further to add?
Uh, thank you. Uh, outside of that, the road construction season's been going well, and we're continuing to, to stay busy, especially out in Castleton on County Road Ten.
And when will Castleton Road be opened up?
Uh, Commissioner Pollak, right now, in town, we're, we're looking to have that, uh, open and ready prior to school starting, so in early to mid-August, and the, the, the main seven-mile segment from the east side of Castleton over to County Road Eleven should, will be open, uh, substantially complete by the end of August, uh, with, you know, so it'll be open to the public by then, so things have been going well, and we were able to get out in front of the, right by the school in that area in town a little bit earlier because of the COVID issue, uh, not having to wait for school buses, uh, we were able, with school shut down, we were able to get going in, uh, by the, the first part of May, so that's given us a good head start.
This, this really is taking a lot longer than I anticipated, not that, not that you're behind or any, anything, I just, I just didn't think that it would be an all-summer project.
With the, uh, the seven, the main seven-mile reconstruction, we're completely hauling off all the old asphalt and then, uh, re-grading the, the whole roadbed, um, and widening it, and then we'll be bringing, bringing in cement to, uh, to do the cement-treated subgrade, uh, which is a twelve-inch cement treatment, that's the equivalent of a twelve to eighteen inches of gravel, and then we'll bring those old asphalt millings back onto the road, and. and mix them with some new gravel and a chemical additive. And then we'll pave over top of that. So this is part of our new process. While it does seem like it's a little bit, going a little slower than maybe you thought, it's actually a faster construction process. And when, by mid-July, we should have a lot of the road with the cement in it and getting ready to start putting the new, the old asphalt millings on there. So once that process is done, things will really start picking up.
And will this new road have no load restrictions in the spring?
Correct. With that cement, between the cement treatment and the subgrade and all the asphalt, new asphalt and the old millings, it's got, you know, really good strength. And this is part of the same process that we were awarded the NACO program award for, where through this process, we saved roughly about a half million dollars per mile compared to if we just told the contractor that they could have the millings and they hauled them off. And then we brought in 10 to 12 inches of new gravel and then paved over that.
Okay, great. And it looks like it's going to be a super road.
It will, it's, when we're done with these new types of roads, they're really perpetual pavements where, you know, you still have to come back every 20 years and do a thin inch or two of fresh asphalt. But outside of that, it should be a perpetual road.
Super. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, anything else for Mr. Benson? If not, M3, coronavirus update, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good afternoon. When I spoke with you at the commission meeting two weeks ago, I indicated that we were looking at a substantial change here coming up today at that point of dropping our open-by-appointed-only format. And we were planning that for a number of reasons. One of the key indicators of pervasiveness of the virus within the community that we're hearing from the epidemiologists and other experts is the rate of hospitalizations in the state. And those numbers in the state and Cass County are down and continuing to drop. Another reason we were looking at that was because the court system in the Cass County courthouse is starting to ramp up and get back to close to a normal schedule. They have their first jury trials scheduled for next week. And so we just thought there was a good opportunity to introduce a little more of our process towards opening up at this time. And so that was discussed with the board and it's shared in a more public manner with employees following that. Have to say that in response to that, I heard a substantial number of concerns from a number of departments, a number of employees. And really, some of those concerns were very well thought out, very well reasoned, and made some pretty persuasive arguments. So I believe you saw the updated message last week that we did not drop the open-by-appointed-only format as of today, as was originally discussed. And so we will continue with that at this point. And it is a change in plans. And I realize that that was something that a number of groups and employees had to react to. But I also, I appreciate the feedback I got and the very well reasoned and very thoughtful concerns that were expressed to me. So we will continue to work with the departments and the divisions that have concerns and look at what are appropriate steps as we continue with a response to COVID-19. But obviously, at this point, we don't have a timeframe of when we would drop that open-by-appointed-only designation. I'll pause for any questions before I go on.
Questions for Mr. Wilson. Continue, sir.
Okay. And one of the other things?
Excuse me, let me interrupt, please. I'm having a hard time hearing Robert.
Mr. Wilson, anything you can do to amp up your?
How's this? Is this better?
Yes, a little better.
Okay. Well, and it's hard to understand. Okay. I will speak up and try to enunciate a little more clearly. I'm on my phone, cellphone as well. As you know, the county has submitted a request to the state for reimbursement for a number of projects related to reducing the impact of COVID-19 in the county. And that, those requests were initially reviewed by the State Emergency Commission mid-June. And then they were, assuming they were approved, would have been forwarded on to the budget section for review. Now, there were a couple of the proposals that we included in our submission from Cass County that the Emergency Commission wanted to take a little longer look at. And those will be deferred to the, an Emergency Commission meeting that I expect to be scheduled sometime later in July. And those specifically relate to capital-related projects in the jail. And so we've had some follow-up conversations, myself and Chair Peterson, with the executive director of the County Association, as well as the director of the State Office of Management and Budget. And all indications that we have is that our applications and our projects that we've identified still appear to be well reasoned and have a very good shot of being approved. But there's just a request to take a little longer, more systematic look at those requests. So there, that is, in some ways, an ongoing effort. There are, I'm told, a portion of our requested projects that were approved by the Emergency Commission. And at some point, we will be seeing really a line-by-line report of what was approved and what is still being deliberated. I expected to hear that, see that list or get that feedback prior to today. Checked with Mr. Trainer at the association, and we have so far not seen that list. But that is information that should be coming in a day, sometime in the next couple of days. Again, I'll pause for questions.
Questions for Mr. Wilson. Continue, sir.
Sure. Obviously, a big part of our coordination and some of the projects that we listed as applying for CARES-related funds to combat the impact of COVID-19 relate to the courts and corrections. And specifically related to courts, again, the district court is looking to begin jury trials next week. And obviously, with social distancing and providing room for not only a final jury, as well as attorneys and defendants and court personnel, you also have to provide for a full jury pool at the beginning of a jury trial that could number 30 or 35 people or more in a courtroom. So that's really been the biggest challenge in getting the courts ready to go for the jury trial system, process when social distancing is needed. Because of that, there is a, an emergency expenditure that the county did incur to purchase audio equipment in the amount of $20,186.68 that we would look for the board to formally approve. What this equipment is, is that, as I mentioned, when you bring in a large jury pool and the attorneys will question individual prospective jurors, in normal circumstances, they would pass around a microphone. And that was one of the points of potential virus spread that needed to be eliminated. And so we've worked with the audio supplier that provides audio and video support to the courtrooms. And this is a set of equipment, almost a Bluetooth piece of equipment that all potential jurors can wear and be broadcast so the recorder can hear them. So this is, this is an amount that we expect to be reimbursed through the CARES funds that were approved. But it was really an emergency purchase that needed, that had a timeframe on it, needed to move forward so it could be ordered and shipped and installed so they could be ready for court jury trials next week. So that is, that is one question that I would look for the board to act on.
So it's Commissioner Pollak speaking. Why is this a county responsibility? I would think this would be, this would be something the courts need and want to be responsible for.
Commissioner Pollak, members of the board, that is a question on a topic that you are not the only one who is asked about. And I've had a number of conversations with Mr. Mont Pleasure and with Mr. Trainer at the association, as well as Mr. Rod Olson, the court administrator. And at the end of the day, we applied for funds that we estimated would be needed to allow the court to function during a COVID-19 time. And the courts statewide made very little application for funds that could be utilized for COVID-related adoptions. And so this is, the thought was that we can argue about it later of who should ultimately be paying the bill. But we needed to provide this equipment. We applied for funds, the court, for whatever reason, they did not. They did not apply, I believe their total was $20,000, $25,000 statewide. So I don't disagree with you in, at all. But we also were at the point of feeling like we needed to take the actions required to allow the court to be able to begin to function in that jury trial setting.
And they obviously didn't feel that way.
They did not, the request for funds by the court system statewide was very, very minimal.
Well, I don't, you've already bought the equipment, right? You've already obligated the county.
Yes. And we believe, and we fully expect and have been told this is money that is eligible for CARES reimbursement. And we expect to be fully reimbursed.
I think I see how this is going. You've committed to county. The state is going to say no way. And the taxpayers will be stuck with the bill.
I certainly hope that's not the way it plays out and it's not the way I expect it to play out.
I think, Commissioner Pollak, this is one of these instances where we stand to some degree helpless as to doing the right thing versus waiting for our state friends to act. I struggle with the fact that so few people had the foresight statewide to ask for these dollars. Why that is, I have no idea. There's courts all across the land that are going to have the exact same scenarios presented to them. And for whatever reason, they do not feel compelled at the moment in time than we did to ask for reimbursement. This is $1.25 billion given to the state to delegate to us local government to make sure we can operate and maintain safety to all the people that are going to be subjected, whether it's jury trials, whatever. And we're the only ones that seemingly, with any scale, the only ones stepped forward and asked for resources. Interestingly enough, we were vetoed. And I think that goes into the politics of it all, which is sad. But it is what it is. I think, as Mr. Wilson says, the reality is we will get reimbursed for this. But it speaks more to the fact that I think that we're trying to be proactive. We are ahead of the game, much like you could argue that our $14, $15 million investment in the Armour radio system. I think that a lot of people will say, hey, that's a good idea after the fact. But you have to be able to conduct court. You have to be able to keep people safe. And this is the minimal investment. As you saw prior, the hundreds of thousands, and again, if we do the jail addition, millions of dollars will be invested in Cass County to keep people safe. And no one else is doing anything. It's.
Well, the jails are Cass County's responsibility. But equipment for the district courts are the responsibility of the district court.
As are the courtrooms that are sitting above me right now, but.
No, those are our responsibility.
Well, we don't have to make them as fancy as we did, do we? We could put them in a shed in the backyard if we wanted to. You get my point?
We're not arguing that point.
So the point is, Commissioner, I'm struggling with this too. But I saw no action taking place, so. Mr. Chair. Commissioner Pollak, anything further?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Steen, in order to put an end to the struggle one way or the other, going to approve the purchase of the audio equipment in the amount of $20,186.68 for district court. If I can hold you for one second, Commissioner, Mr. Burdick. I see you're trying to draw my attention. Is it possible that you are?
Yes, thanks. I thought I would, Mr. Chair, I would just add this in. Under the Century Code, although it doesn't provide a lot of detail, under the Century Code, in Chapter 11, 11, on counties, one of the duties of the Board of County Commissioners is to construct, equip, operate, and maintain county buildings, including court facilities, correction centers, jails, and other law enforcement facilities. Just thought I'd do that.
That's not helpful.
Yes, thank you.
I like being mad and frustrated. Is there a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, I'll.
Commissioner Shurling?
Yeah.
Breitling? Peterson?
Yes.
Dean? Pollak?
No.
Motion passes. Mr. Wilson, can you please?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, one last point that I'd want to make under the COVID update is about two months ago, at this point, the State Department of Health identified a need across the state, but most specifically in Fargo and Cass, of homeless individuals who were either COVID-positive or awaiting tests for COVID. And without a home or without a stable shelter, someplace to go where they could quarantine and take care of themselves while they were awaiting the test results or working through the illness and getting back to better health. That presented a real opportunity and a danger to spread the virus significantly. And so the Department of Health stood up an emergency shelter process and framework through a number of local hotels where they were housing individuals in those circumstances. The state worked with the local Department of Health to support that effort and continued that effort through the end of June, at which time the state indicated that they were really handing that back over to local entities. And to be fair to the state, they really were not seeing any significant levels of use in locales other than Fargo and Cass. of use in locales other than Fargo and and Cass County. This has been a collaborative effort between state, between the the local shelters as well as the the city of Fargo and and Cass County, and the local shelters have indicated that if there are individuals falling in that category, up to five individuals, they would be able to appropriately care for and provide for those individuals. The issue would be when they get over five individuals, then the the shelter community would be looking for either the the city of Fargo and or Cass County to provide some sort of a central housing location where services could be offered in a in a either a dorm or or hotel or group setting in some way. And I I think the the again, the the city, public health, the shelters are working very collaboratively, and the the operational end of that has been is largely been been addressed. But one thing that was identified was that when the state switched that operational responsibility back to the locals, there was an indication that FEMA funding would be available for 75% of the the cost to provide those services, but the remaining 25% would fall back to local entities, the city and the county. Well, Chair Peterson, rightly so, raised the issue that why why should that be a local responsibility when we when the state has received such an infusion of of CARES funds, CARES CARES Act funds? And so we are in the process of still working with the the state association to to get that matter resolved. Again, no, no funds have been expended under this process right now, but we are looking proactively to make sure that with the CARES funds can be used for this purpose if that is needed. So that that's more just an update as another element that Chair Peterson and I have been working on with at some level of detail in the last week or so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pollock?
Yes, sir.
Well, I I appreciate your efforts on that, and I but I would remind both Administrator Wilson and Chair Peterson that that the commitment by the county really has to pass in front of the county commission, just just so that we don't have a situation like we had with the on the last item on the agenda. In other words, in other words, you don't have the you don't have the authority to commit the county without the authorization of the county commission.
Understood, absolutely. Without other questions, that that concludes my COVID report.
Any further questions, commissioners? If not, then foreign agenda. Standing committees. As we do every year, we've got a number of open seats that if we wish to make nominations from our group, we have a number of audit nominating resolutions legislative. I am by default on the legislative committee. So I guess the the question is, does anybody else want to serve as you have in the past? Commissioner Steen?
I'll continue to just run the audit committee if they'll have me.
Okay. Commissioner Steen would like to serve in the audit committee. Anyone else? Commissioner Brightling? Commissioner Brightling and Commissioner Shurling?
Me, I would agree to serve on the legislative committee.
Commissioner Brightling wants to serve in the legislative committee? Outstanding. Commissioner Shurling?
Uh, thank you. I can continue on the committee, and I can't think of the name of the nominating committee.
Your nominee, correct.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue on that.
I guess that leaves that leaves me with the resolutions committee.
If you'd like to, absolutely, then we can, you know, we can have two people if you want. Commissioner Shurling, weren't you on resolutions last time too, or not?
I was on resolutions, and that is that's a great committee to be on, but go for it, Commissioner Pollock, and I'll I'll do this other one. And, you know, as as we get to the the conference, we all have an opportunity to get more engaged in in the resolution, so.
Yep, wonderful.
And when do we expect this conference is going to take place?
I don't know that if it's scheduled right now for the first week in October, but I wouldn't necessarily get your hopes up to think it's going to transpire. I guess I never know, but I think if it does go forth, it's going to be different than in the past.
Okay.
If I could just chime in there, I I did, you know, as I know you did, Commissioner Peterson, but I had a meeting with the North Dakota Association of Counties Board last week, and we discussed that in great length. It sounds like they've got a lot of great speakers lined up, and I think it will be really a a good conference, I'm hopeful, but it it may very well be virtual. I I just don't see how you can possibly crowd all those folks in the Bismarck Civic Center. And I think it's kind of an exciting opportunity, you know, there's a number of people that never attend that. Um, you know, there's some of us that always attended, but for those that never attend it, maybe it's an opportunity for them to participate and, you know, I I it's only for this year, hopefully, and so we'll see what happens, but I I think the the conference will be full of great information and, of course, the legislative sessions coming up, so the resolutions committee is going to be an important one.
Wonderful. Anyone else want to participate on any other committees? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the names as presented. Is there a second, please?
Second by Pollock.
Thank you. Just moving to second, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, a better due rule, please, roll call.
Commissioner Steen?
Yes.
Shurling?
Yeah.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. County coroner discussion, Mr. Wilson and then Mr. Burdick.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you very much. I hope all of you have had a chance to to see both Mr. Burdick's memo outlining some of the legal requirements of a county coroner in the state of North Dakota, as well as the memo that I submitted this morning. That that just gives you a little bit of background of some of my conversations with Dr. Baird that led to his submitting his letter of intent to retire at the end of August. And and so I would just, I don't have a whole lot to add other than what I provided in my memo, that I've been having conversations with Dr. Baird related to to this topic, going on probably a year now. And and he made it clear that he was looking forward to retirement at some point and wanted to, he very much wanted to see the the best interest of the county and the and the coroner's office maintained and and be able to plan for a transition in a thoughtful and and logical manner. And so he, based on those conversations, I suggested that I was familiar with a an arrangement down in in Sioux Falls in Minnehaha County where a forensic pathology pathologist was essentially shared between a health system and the county. And that individual performed autopsies and and functioned in a very hands-on way as the as the county coroner, also had responsibilities with the health system. You know, really, the the system that we have in place here is is much different, and that I won't go too too deep into this, but starts with a a eternally different setup where where the state financially is responsible for autopsies, and that really leads to the partnership that we have between the the Cass County Coroner's Office and the the state medical examiner and the University of North Dakota School of Medicine, which performs autopsies for Cass County through their pathology unit. And so in in understanding that background, you know, I had agreed with with Dr. Baird that I would reach out to Ascencia and Sanford and see if there was any interest in partnering in a similar way for a forensic pathology pathologist that might be located in Fargo and perform autopsies when needed here locally rather than having them done through the medical school up in Grand Forks. I had the opportunity to have have conversations with representatives from from both Sanford and Ascencia, and and the end result of those those conversations was it it just, for a variety of reasons, didn't seem like it was a right fit for either either system. And and so I provided that feedback back to Dr. Baird, and and hearing that that was the the feedback from both of the the local major health systems, that's when he indicated that he was going to submit his letter of of intent to retire. So we've we've got a very strong coroner's office here in in Cass County that has great relationships with the the North Dakota School of Medicine and their pathology department, as well as the the state forensic examiner's office. And so I think we we certainly could continue with the the same basic structure that we have, but but obviously, if we chose to do that, would need to name a a new coroner by the the first of of September. So I I I guess I would pause there if Mr. Burdick wanted to jump into the the question of some of the legal requirements of a county coroner before I would venture further.
Mr. Burdick, thoughts on your memo, please?
Sure, I've got some additional information. I the memo that's in your materials expresses a bit about the legal requirements, and they show under eligibility, if you've got that in front of you, potential for a physician, an advanced practice RN or an RN, a physician's assistant, and then the last one is sort of a larger category, any other individual determined by the state forensic examiner to be qualified as a coroner. We have a new state forensic examiner who started just the middle of last week, and I spoke with her today, and I asked her about that category, and she said to me a couple of things, and I thought I'd share them with you. As you select a new coroner, she said, don't get hung up on degrees, meaning essentially the first three bullets, physicians, RNs, or physician assistants. She said, they don't teach any of this in your medical training. Doctors come out of school, and they don't really have any training in being a coroner. A coroner is not, at least as we practice it, is not a pathologist. They are somebody who does the investigation essentially that helps the people who do the autopsies. Our autopsies, as Mr. Wilson indicated, are done through Grand Forks at the University of North Dakota and Dr. Sins and her crew. The state forensic examiner said it was more, she described the the people in the coroner's office as the eyes and ears of the medical examiners at the scenes, because the medical examiners, the guys who do the autopsy, don't go out to the scenes themselves. And she said she thought the most important things were experience and interest in and interest in the work, and you can get training, whether you start with it or can get it later, through the American Board of Medical Death Investigation or investigators. But I think her she the primary thing she thought was of value is experience and an interest in the work. You could get somebody with a better degree but not might not be all that interested in doing the real work of the job, and she didn't think that would be a plus. So I'm sharing those thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Burdick. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Wilson or Mr. Burdick?
Commissioner Pollock speaking. Kind of looks like under any other individual determined by the state forensic examiner to be qualified, that that Christie would probably fit in that category. I'm sure her name has come up in the discussion, and I'm just wondering if it's thought that she could be deemed qualified.
Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I I think she could be could be deemed a very strong candidate. I know Dr. Baird regularly talks about the the experience and the dedication of both both Christie and Darren Haverland in the in that office. And so I I think we have a we have a strong pool of of talent, maybe maybe a a small pool, but a strong pool of talent and interest and dedication currently within the office.
Mr. Chair?
Shurling and then Commissioner Steen.
Thank you. So, you know, the recommendation is to, you know, I mean, if you if you go through Q and you get the, you know, we advertise and so on and so forth, it could take some time to do interviews and finally land on the appropriate candidate. Do we have to do anything in the interim if we can't get this, I I assume it would take longer than August to get that accomplished? Do do we need to have someone else oversee the department once Dr. Baird is gone? Or what we have in place, is that sufficient for the interim?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is Robert here. My my expectation and my recommendation would be that we we move forward, we we submit the position of a coroner to Gallagher, have a PAQ developed and and get give some direction of where that would land on our on our salary matrix and and get a a applicant employment notice and and job duties developed and advertise for that and have it open for a a period of time similar to another appointed department head. And we might we might extend a bit beyond that September 1 deadline, but I think we could, or or retirement date, but I think we could be very close to meeting that that date if we if we moved quickly.
Commissioner Pollock speaking. I think I think we have a couple of alternatives in front of us. One of them is to the knowledge that in the absence of of an appointed coroner, that the sheriff is deemed the coroner for the county, so we can always use that as a backup. But I think our backup also could be that we could appoint appoint someone who's now in the office, one of the people who are now in the office, as the as the acting coroner until we got the the physician evaluation back and and received the applications that that we're anticipating. So so I I think that we'll be okay. It's just, you know, it's a matter of timing. And so so with that, I would move that this position be determined to
Can you wait one second, please? I have one more comment from Commissioner Steen, just, let's go after this Commissioner Shurling, though, one else. Just a question for me. Do we have currently a contract with Dr. Baird that's a part-time coroner? Correct. And I I thought I saw it in when I was reading, how much is that amount? Oh, it's $25,000 a year? Mr. Wilson, Mr. Montplaisir, am I close?
I believe that's correct.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. How much was it? Twenty-five thousand a year? And so we're looking at now going with a full-time coroner? I'm just asking, the reason I'm asking is we're talking about our full-time officials, you know, maybe move to coroner position, and then how does that work? And are we, you know, is that what we're contemplating, then are we going to have a search committee or review committee interview? I mean, I'm just curious what the process is, if we've got a September 1 deadline. Mr. Wilson, do you want to walk through your timeline again?
Yeah, I I think you're, Commissioner Steen, to your point, I I think we certainly do have the potential where we where there's a there's a financial impact of transitioning from a a contracted coroner to a full-time salary coroner, and there may be a an increase there. there. Now, whether you would need two full-time deputy coroners in that case and, as opposed to potentially the, the coroner plus one full, one full-time deputy, I, I don't know. So there's, there's a few things that we, we still need to, to work out there, but, but there's, it would, would potentially look different indeed.
My point being is just so we're making sure we take all that into consideration as we look to making some appointments or interviews.
Yep, and I think-
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
I just was going to say, I, I think we, we certainly need to, to flesh out, and staff need to flesh out some more details of this, this for you. This was at, at this point, bringing this forward to your attention. We, we received Dr. Baird's letter last week and have some, some work that we need to move forward on, but also wanted you as the board to, to understand where, where we're, how we're proceeding and, and just make sure that is in line with what, what the board is comfortable with.
So, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Burdick, Commissioner Shirling and then Commissioner Brightling.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a kind of note, my, I, I lost you for a moment and maybe somebody said this while I was gone, but if, if they didn't, according to the statute 1119.103, the Board of County Commissioners shall appoint a coroner for a term of five years, which is different than any other position in Cass County where somebody is appointed for a term of years, I think. Elected people have, in a sense, have been appointed by the voters for four years, but if, if you, if you employ somebody, at the end of that five years, for example, conceivably they, they might not be appointed for the next term. So we'd have to kind of work our way through that. I'm not sure what the exact answer to that is, but that's how the statute refers to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Shirling.
Thank you. And so just kind of following up on Commissioner Pollak's comment, we really, or Commissioner Steen, we really at this point would be replacing a part-time coroner, not a full-time coroner. That would be a completely different conversation, really. And there may be someone out there that would be interested in being a part-time coroner, pathologist at a local hospital or someone along those lines.
Anything further, Commissioner?
Well, I would ask the question of what is, what's in the county's best interest?
Commissioner Pollak, one second. Commissioner Brightling, first, please.
What is the chief assistant, what's her level of compensation?
Mr. Mount Pleasure? Christie to get paid? Unmute, unmute, my friend.
On his computer, I can tell.
Take me a second to find her here.
He's looking it up.
Hey, Mr. Mount Pleasure will let us know shortly. Commissioner Brightling, anything further?
My, my concern is, would that person even be interested in the part-time coroner's job at $25,000?
Well, and I think-
Probably not.
I, I think what we're going to find is that we're going to wind up with, I will be so bold as to say, we're going to find, A, how lucky we were having Dr. Baird with us for as long as we did and how much he saved the taxpayers, A, and then B, I think what we're going to wind up with and not to presuppose how this is all going to work out, is that Christie's going to be our coroner with a subtle pay raise because for all intents and purposes, when Mr. Baird was sick, Dr. Baird was sick, Christie did all of it anyway with little, little pain, little suffering. I think as a very, very part-time coroner, I think he was there as the educated, very experienced medical person just to help out if things were confusing, which I think all of us need sometimes. But in the end, our staff is going to remain as it is right now. We add maybe another part-time person, but long story short, fiscal impact will be not substantive, but it'll be something. And I think in the end we'll wind up with a similar staff to what we have right now. Commissioner Brightling, anything further, sir?
No, sir.
Commissioner Pollak?
Okay, I have a question and that is, do we think that, that this position could be filled with someone who's on the staff or who is a student in the UND Medical School? In other words, could we have a, could we have a coroner from Grand Forks responsible for Fargo?
I think anything is up in the air at this stage, but I, I think the first thing you said is, and again, I'm, I'm a little smarter than anyone else in this room, so my instinct is giving me a hint that it's going to be Christie with a pay raise.
Okay, well, I, I move that the human relations director be advised to develop a jo, a job description for the coroner position and further that it be sent on to Gallagher for position evaluation.
Is there a second, please? Second. Move in a second and any discussion? Mr. Wilson, does that give you direction?
It does, thank you very much.
Outstanding. Any further discussion? If not, just because, yeah, let's, we're spending money, so roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollak?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Shirling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anything further, Mr. Wilson or Mr. Burdick, that you need?
Not at this time, no.
No, thank you.
Outstanding. Mr. Mount Pleasure, were you able to figure out what that salary is?
No, I can't find her in the payroll system for some reason, but I'll find it.
I'm going to guess it's about 65 to 75 by the time you're done with all the benefits and everything else. Anyway, let, let us know if you find out, sir.
Okay.
6A flood diversion transfer sales tax dollars. Mr. Mount Pleasure, you're going to have to do some double duty.
Okay, as you can see, our, our take from the sales tax went down dramatically in, in June. You know, when we get the money, it's always a couple months behind. Up until this June payment, our collections have been really strong and even with the
June payment, we're still almost 3% over what we took in the same period in the previous 12 months. So I think that's good. I think our next payment will probably be considerably less. If you drive around town, you don't see anybody in the stores, you don't see anybody in the restaurants. So that, that'll change considerably, I'm sure. I think online sales, I know, looking at my house, those have been really strong, but I, I doubt that it's going to pick up the slack from all the motels and the restaurants and the other shopping that used to be going on.
Commissioners?
Commissioner Dean? Move to authorize the county finance director to transfer $808,939.52 to the city of Fargo as a fiscal agent for the FM Divergent Authority.
Just a second, please. Second. Move in a second, any discussion? Any discussion? If not?
Commissioner Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Shirling?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, State Water Commission reimbursement request, Mr. Mount Pleasure, you're up again.
You have two requests in front of you. The bulk of the dollars are really land purchases. So the request is for $5.5 million and I think the second one, which is worked around Oxbow and stuff, is $228,000.
Commissioners, questions or thoughts?
Chairman, I move to authorize the chair to sign reimbursement request 102 in the amount of $5,519,481.17 and also reimbursement request 103 for $228,188.72 the State Water Commission to distribute according to the terms and conditions of House Bill 1020.
Is there a second, please? Second, thank you, Commissioner Steen. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Shirling?
Yes.
Brightling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
Shirling?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Many reports? Mr. Wilson, where are you at?
Sorry, I was on mute. Mr. Chair, members of the board, a couple of things. I want to, very pleased to let you know that our veteran service officer, Mr. Chris Derry, has been selected for the Fargo leadership, Fargo Moorhead, West Fargo Leadership Program through the chamber. He'll begin that, I believe, in the, in the fall. Great program, I went through it a couple of years ago and I, and I'm very excited to, to say that Mr. Derry is, is going to be participating in that program. One, one note, going back to the, the PRX pilot discussion earlier in this meeting, there was a reference that, that that would be coming, coming back in two weeks. I will verify with Mr. Gilmore, but I understand that that will be an entirely new application that will generate a new letter, go through the City of Fargo Tax Exempt Review Committee, a new, and then come back as a, as an entirely different application to be reviewed. So we, we probably, I will send a, a letter that would, would say that we will continue to negotiate per the, the motion, expecting that to take the form of a new application. But I, I just wanted to make that clear that that was my understanding of coming out of that agenda item earlier in the meeting. And then, and then also wanted to, I've had a, heard a couple of, of questions, comments individually from commissioners about budget hearings coming up later this month and wondering if the, the intent of commissioners is to meet in person for budget hearings on the 23rd, 24th, 25th, excuse me, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, or meet via the Teams format that we have been utilizing for meetings the last couple of months.
Commissioners, what do we want to do? Want to be face-to-face or do remotely? Face-to-face is not a good term to use, probably. In person?
Commissioner Pollak speaking. I think for now we figure that, that we will be in person, but we'll hold open the option for those who would choose to be remote.
Commissioner Shirling?
That certainly sounds reasonable. Is there, is there room for all of us to safely distance?
I think so, once we, we have, if we have five of us up on the dais, like we did before, where we have Ms. Warden, maybe, sit where you want to really, but down and then I think we had, well, Mr. Burdick probably doesn't have to be here for the whole thing either. So we just kind of spread ourselves out by extending the dais artificially. And then we have, what I suggest is we have people coming in for budget hearings, maybe on a tighter schedule than we sort of, sort of be floating, maybe we alter more rigorous schedules so we know for their safety and ours, I guess, we know that at point X, that's when you're going to be here.
I would also suggest that some of those presentations could be remote.
Absolutely.
Certainly, you know, in the past, there's, you know, Sheriff's Department, Social Services, some of those bigger departments have filled up the room and that certainly is-
Okay. Mr. Wilson, understood?
Yes, that concludes my report, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Steen has, sorry, another comment. Yeah, I like Commissioner Pollak's recommendation, assume in person, you know, play it by yours as the change goes on. I, I like the idea though of bringing the, if they choose to bring in the, the budget department into the chamber and talk, you know, talk to us, we have questions, it's much easier, I think, than that dialogue. If they feel uncomfortable with it, you know, so be it, but that's why we're on, so two weeks away, two and a half weeks away, we're able to do that with a social distance at the dais, I think adequately with some people sitting down in front if we need to. And I just think it's going to go a lot smoother if we're able to do it in person, in person.
Commissioner Pollak with a question?
Sir?
Where are we meeting on Tuesday, July 21 instead of Monday?
Because there was going to be a NACO conference and there was going to be people gone and we moved the meeting to Tuesday.
All right. I thought that that's what it was, but I didn't know. Thank you.
And that won't obviously be happening. Ms. Warden has a question?
Well, I'm the one that sets up the budget hearings with all the different departments and the agencies. So do you want me to leave it up to the individuals if they're more comfortable coming in person versus remote? I mean, maybe some might prefer, are you okay with them, I guess, is what I'm trying to say? Are you okay if they say, I would really prefer to meet remotely?
I'm fine, yeah, I'm fine if they want to meet remotely and I think if they're going to attend, we ask them to limit their participants.
Okay.
One caveat, if we say 110-
And we need to-
It better be like quarter to one. I mean, I-
Need to be punctual.
Punctual, or we, we're going to go on to the next one. I don't know how to do it because if we spend 10 minutes hunting somebody down, that's going to be a problem. That's what I'm telling you. I think we've always been sort of loose because we've had the 132 in the past.
Yeah.
I think now it's-
They just move on to the next one and they have to get back in at the end of the line, I suppose.
Well, I'm thinking that most people will be okay with coming in, but just as, if I can just offer that as an option, I'm, I want to make sure I can.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, any further thoughts on this? What are the dates for budget meetings?
22nd, 23rd and 24th. And I hope to have them done on the 22nd and 23rd and not have to meet on the Friday.
Wait. We are working through all the other meetings?
Yeah, yep.
Hey, Mr. Wilson, anything further?
The capacity-
Nothing further from me.
There's a limitation right now? Is that like 50% or something?
It's 50% up to like 1,000 people. It's, there's, so for us, it's no impact. It's just we're, we're being smart. I think we're being smart, which is why, so I'm doing, as you saw earlier today, I do all my meetings remotely still. I'm only here because I'm chair, otherwise I'd be sitting in my house like you folks are. I just think that when we have the ability to be smart, we should do that, even though we don't have to necessarily. I just like the idea of being smart, so.
If I could suggest too, you know, I mean, there, there's so much we don't know about this, but leaving the doors open if people wanted to wait their turn out in the hallway, that certainly would be reasonable accommodation, I think, if people felt more comfortable doing that.
Absolutely. Commissioners, anything else? If not, Mr. Wilson, anything else?
Nothing else, thank you.
Outstanding. Commissioner Brightling?
I have one item that I wanted to visit briefly with you about and that's, for several months now, we've been dealing with a problem on an approach on County Route 16 just east of I-29. Some time ago, we sent out a notice, a formal notice to the property owner that was approved at one of these commission meetings. Discussions have taken place. We were under the impression that, an outline and then decently agreed upon and a, an extensive letter in early May was sent to the attorney and the property owner involved. To date, we've not received anything. We would like to have on the commission agenda for the next meeting, formal action to take place and we'll have, I'll have provided through Heather copies of some documents that I want each of you to see and have in your possession before that time, as well as a suggestion on my part of what action we would like this commission to take at that time. I have, that's the only thing I have today.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
I thought we took action on that, to put that where it was.
Yeah, Commissioner, we took action directing our engineer to work with the owner and the owner, as Commissioner Brightling said perfectly, gave us a plan and then ghosted us, just sort of disappeared. So unfortunately, I think we're in a position to be more formal, I think for lack of a better term, and I think as Commissioner Brightling said, he'll have more documentation. I don't, I'm not 100% privy to what he's been discussing either, so he'll have more information for us in which we would then act in a couple of weeks on a more formal basis and hopefully by then, we'll have, you know, at any given moment, we can have resolution to this, we just need a phone call back from our owner and we can move forward without us having to do anything. But as of right now, I don't think we have an owner that's willing to participate. So this is going to be a needful process, which is unfortunate. Love to be wrong, but. Commissioner Brightling, anything further?
I have nothing further.
Commissioner Shirling, please.
Other than that, that North Dakota-
But, uh, as of right now, I don't think we have an owner that's willing to participate, so this is gonna be a needful process, which is unfortunate. Love to be wrong, but. Uh, Commissioner Brightling, anything further?
I have nothing further to say.
Commissioner Shirling, please.
Uh, other than that, that, um, North Dakota Association of County Board, um, I think there really isn't anything else to report, it was a pretty lengthy, um, meeting, we had our audit, which went just dandy, and, um, we're looking forward to figuring out what we're gonna do this fall with, with the, um, conference. We selected our committee members today, so I, I think we're all caught up. Um, looking forward to the legislature in session next January, thanks.
Good for you, Commissioner Shirling, looking forward to it, okay. Uh, Mr. Burdick, she's looking forward to the session, can you hardly believe it? What, you have any comments, Mr. Burdick?
Certainly not about that. Um, I, following up on, uh, Commissioner Brightling's comment, I will reach out to, uh, the Landowners Council here, uh, later on this week, and tell him what the plan is at present, hopefully that may motivate his client, but I will do that. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Pollak?
I, I don't understand how Commissioner Shirling can be looking forward to the legislative session, because I always, I always really dread it, I have to say. But anyway, I have no report.
Thank you, Commissioner Steen. Uh, short report, uh, the Fargo Dome Authority met, uh, for, had the results for May, the budget through May this year was zero, and we actually have a negative of thirty-one thousand, so we're not doing that bad so far, but that's assuming something occurs in the next six or seven months. Uh, the budget for twenty-twenty-one is a hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollar positive, the twenty-twenty budget by comparison was two-hundred-and-eighty thousand. So we're still somewhat optimistic, assuming the football games goal is planned and a few concerts dropped in there. Twenty-twenty projected actual, nobody knows, obviously. One other piece there, I was appointed treasurer at the last board meeting for- Ooh, so you have access to the forty-seven million dollars? I do. Nice, I get this jail paid for.
You need to go on an excursion of some sort to research?
Uh, anything else, Commissioner Steen, thank you. Commissioner Mypleasure?
Okay, first, your ques, answer your other question, we have two K grades for the coroner. Um, the first one is C forty-three, which runs from fifty-one thousand to eighty-one thousand, and then C fifty-one, which is the chief coroner, which is Christie, and that runs from sixty-one thousand to ninety thousand, she currently makes seventy-five, so. Um, the good news is, we finished up with the election. The bad news is, we're looking forward to the general election, trying to figure out how we can run that with polling places open, um, looking at different mask opportunities, um, some type of social distancing, that sort of thing. We have thirty-eight precincts, and I don't anticipate opening up thirty-eight precincts. I think that would be, uh, difficult to control, but we have the equipment and we have the ability now to do, um, vote centers, and, and maybe we can run vote centers for a period of time, under the law, we can currently run them two weeks before the election, and so we'll look at that, um, but we're really in the planning stages. Uh, Deanna is trying to find, uh, places that we can rent for that period of time. Uh, motels work great for us, uh, but we also have some churches that we can probably be in, so. I think we'll end up with a combination of things, but I think it'll accommodate the voters and, uh, hopefully make everybody happy and everybody safe.
What was your total for absentee voters, Mr. Mypleasure, that have already applied for mailing? Remember?
So far, for the general election, we have twenty-eight thousand applications. Uh, the way we did that in the primary election is, we actually had the ballots mailed out of Plymouth, Minnesota for our initial run, they mailed about nineteen thousand of our ballots, and we sent out approximately twenty thousand ballots out of, out of our office here. Uh, we're really not set up for that, the way the process works with the applications and stuff, but we may do the best we can. Our anticipation would be we'd send out that initial twenty-eight thousand forty days before the election out of Plymouth, Minnesota again, so that, that'll get that ball moving. Um, if it works, it's just not, it's just kind of cumbersome. The other thing is, I've started looking at the budgets, and, you know, the state revenues, of course, are dipping some, um, we did some action a couple of years ago, which kind of helps with the general fund. We only anticipate five million dollars of state aid fund going into the, the general fund, and we should be pretty close to that, even with the decreases next year. Any excess over that, we normally put in the capital projects fund. Um, probably the biggest area we would get hit is in the highway department. You know, gas tax, uh, will be going down because people just aren't driving, and then, of course, we're not gonna get the, uh, ferry dog funding, um, that we were expecting to get in twenty-twenty-one. But otherwise, our revenue sources are pretty stable.
Luckily, we kept property tax, Mr. Mypleasure, otherwise I think we'd be in some trouble right now.
Yes, we would.
Anything further, sir?
That's it.
Okay, uh, from my perspective, we have, Mr. Wilson and I pretty much have a perpetual COVID meeting of some course every day, uh, the interesting meeting we're gonna have is sort of the team, leadership team, and I think Commissioner Shirling, you're on this too, uh, tomorrow for Armor Radio, so what we've got is, we're gonna start talking about, I think you're on this, yeah, you are, uh, start talking about what our future will lead to regarding our, our armor system, or our radio system, so I think it's a good thing to start talking about now rather than leaving it to the last minute, a couple of years from now, so have that dialogue started up. Uh, otherwise, it's just various meetings throughout the week, and I'll just stop there.
Mr. Chair, could I add one thing?
Yes, please.
Um, you know, the, the, um, this virtual meeting has really, um, I think sped up a lot, a lot of opportunities to do more online streaming of meetings, and all the committee, uh, meeting rooms at State Capitol will now, now have that ability. Um, I almost had a head-on collision a couple of years ago with a bunch of my diversion friends heading to the Capitol, so I think the more opportunity we have to stay off icy roads in the winter and be able to drop in on, on our computers, that'll, I'm excited about that.
Absolutely.
Just to follow up to Mr. Mypleasure's reference to, uh, highway department funds, I have already started to meet with Robert, Jason, uh, on, on his budget, and he's anticipating an appropriate reduction in, in several of those categories. There are, uh, others that, uh, that can be adjusted otherwise, and, um, we'll continue to work with him to make sure that that works for him next year.
Wonderful. Uh, with that, correspondence, please.
Respondence received as of July sixth, twenty-twenty. Letter from Dynamic Environmental Associates requesting comments regarding a project to construct four new broadcast towers in Cass County, proposed by Northwestern Media. Copy referred to county engineer and county planner.
Move to receiving file. Second, please.
Second.
Moving second, and all in favor, so you can remember saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion passes, and now item number ten. Is there a second?
Second, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank you, Commissioners and attendees, as always, regarding our virtual meetings. Have an awesome day.
Everybody.
Thank you, bye, everybody.